All right, I believe everybody's here, so I'll call this September 18th, 2013. Give your planning commission meeting order. With that, could everybody please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairman Schlosser.
Here.
Vice Chair Peters.
Here.
Commissioner Barnes.
Here.
Commissioner Bray.
Here.
Commissioner Miller.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner Hamilton.
Here.
All right, thank you, we're all here. Item number four, minutes from the last meeting, August 21st, do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Bray, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Public comments, is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak about a non-agenda item? Do please fill out a comment card. Seeing none. Moving right along, item number six, disclosure of ex parte communications. You ready?
None.
Seeing none. Item number seven, old business. Old business. Item number eight, new business. Eight point one, one three dash two zero zero dash zero 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 zero. Huh?
Zero one.
One.
One? One three? What did I say?
It's okay, it's okay.
After all those zeros, there's a one.
Oh, my one's below.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm slow. Anyways, resounding to amend the Estrella Phase One Plan Area Development, PAD, for parcels one through seven, twelve and seventy-seven of the Estrella Phase One PAD. Welcome, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, commission members. This is a proposal to amend Phase One of the Estrella PAD. It is a 617 acre portion located basically on the west side there along Estrella Parkway. That right there is the Star Tower Monument, and the property basically runs south to the roundabout there with Cotton Lane. Surrounding the property to the north and west is the proposed King Ranch development. To the east is Estrella Parkway, then additional development within Estrella, custom homes, as well as to the south, there is also the north core there at Cotton and Estrella Parkway, along with some non-residential and residential uses. Subject property is 617 acres. App client is proposing to amend the PAD. They are looking at changing land use designations, some parcel densities, removing the golf course portion that was originally shown. Ultimately, 1,250 dwelling units would be provided for. And this is a page out of the PAD booklet, basically showing the existing land uses and the proposed land uses and how they correspond. For the residential, you're looking at several different types of residential housing, everything from custom, semi-custom, all the way up to townhomes. This is the open space plan out of the PAD booklet. Over 300 acres of open space is proposed. The golf course does get removed, but in turn that gets retained as natural open space. There is also individual open space areas proposed within each development parcel. And this exhibit from the PAD book is basically just showing that they did perform an analysis, they did look at those slopes 20 percent associated with the hillside. Those are the red colored areas. Also, they looked at significant washes, those will be retained in a natural state. The yellow areas are those areas that they felt they could develop. And that is the conceptual development plan that they're proposing, one instance of what they could develop using that cluster development, putting all the development in those development App client did hold two open house meetings on August 8th, approximately 100 people attended between those two open house meetings. The formal neighborhood meeting was held on August 29th, approximately 16 residents were in attendance. All three meetings were held up in Estrella in the Star Point Residence Club. Staff, we have reviewed the PAD amendment. We are recommending approval, subject to the stipulations in the staff report. With that, Mr. Chairman, my presentation has concluded. I'm available for any questions, as is the applicant.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff at this point?
Is there, I know that King Ranch development is on the, sort of on the west side there, but is there any potential for egress on the Cotton Lane, either tying in with something that would be part of the King Ranch development, or is it anticipated that it will all have to come in and out of Estrella Parkway?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, we did bring that subject up. From a city perspective, our traffic engineers concluded that while it could be beneficial, it wasn't necessary for this development, for ingress egress, fire response. This development can stand alone with its transportation network. Also brought that up with the applicant. Their desire would be to not have a connection through King Ranch to Cotton Lane.
What are the implications for, if it's 1,250 houses, what are the implications for Estrella Parkway in terms of increased traffic patterns?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, staff, we did look at, the traffic report was provided. There will be required improvements to Estrella Parkway that they will have to do, turn lanes, potential for signalization at those two points onto Estrella Parkway. So there will be improvements that they will be required.
Not to belabor this, but as you go farther north, Estrella Parkway becomes two lanes rather than four lanes going across the bridge and on into MC-85. Any problems with that increased traffic through that narrower portion of the road?
Mr. Chairman, commission members, none that were identified in the traffic report. The impacts that they would have, the report concluded were certain turn lanes, the signalization, and those would be what we would ultimately require of the developer.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman, just to piggyback on that point, is there plans in the traffic studies, you know, 10 years out to expand Estrella Parkway north of there? I don't recall from the, you know, from the plans that I've seen if that's there or not, so just more of a refresher.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, not that I remember seeing in the traffic study, that is something I do not know, if future plans for Estrella Parkway, if there are for expanding that.
It might be worthy, since the PIR traffic is also routed across Don Vineyard to Estrella Parkway and then north through that two lane area.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, that is something I will research unless Chair Joe has anything to add. At this point, that is something I will make sure I include in future correspondence when this goes to council.
Anybody else? All right, the applicants here, they wish to speak? Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
Pete Tyke, I work with Newland Communities, 5090 North Fortyth Street. Just wanted to mention that we've spent a tremendous amount of time on this and trying to be very sensitive to the area because of the location, the entrance into the community. It's going to be the first thing people see coming in to Estrella, so we've been very cautious in the landforms, the street, the setbacks, things of that nature, so we're very proud of this and looking forward to moving forward.
Any questions of the applicant? Have you had any interest, I know you're just doing this preliminary planning, but any interest from builders?
Well, we've shown it to a couple builders, and they really like the concept, the area, the way it's designed, but we haven't approached anyone in the respect of, are you interested in buying it, because we're comfortable we won't have a problem there, and we're a year and a half out.
Year and a half, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing none. Any other comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, I will be recusing myself from this vote as I hold an agricultural lease with the applicant.
Okay, so noted, thank you. Nobody else? All right, I will, I didn't open the public hearing, but I'll close it anyways. With that, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 132000000.
One.
And the one.
I second.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion from Commissioner Peters, Vice Chair Peters, and a second from Commissioner Miller. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, thank you, guys. Moving right along, item number eight point two, one three dash three zero zero dash zero 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 two. Use permit for convenience use Dutch Brothers Coffee with the drive-through lane at 14160 West Indian School Road, and I will open the public hearing. Mr. Schmitz.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, good evening. As you duly noted, this is a use permit to allow convenience use, and in this case the convenience use is a drive-through lane to a coffee shop that would be operated under the ownership of Dutch Brothers, and it's located at the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Litchfield Road in the Palm Valley Village Commercial Center, which is zoned PAD, mixed-use commercial under the Palm Valley PAD, which is essentially the equivalent of the C2 General Commercial District. The ordinance requires that convenience use that has such a thing as a drive-through lane go through a use permit process, and that needs to be evaluated on a number of criteria to determine that the use will be not be material detrimental to persons residing or working in the vicinity of the adjacent of the property, or to the neighborhood or the public welfare, and that the use is reasonably compatible with the uses in the surrounding This is a little bit tighter zoomed-in photo for you that depicts the conceptual site plan for the drive-through, just due west of the shops building that is adjacent to Litchfield The traffic that wants to avail itself of the use of the drive-through window would approach from the north, through the, either through a drive between parking stalls here or through the drive, through the driveway that's located just north of the site. There's queuing space for at least five cars, and then once the clients of the store get their coffee, they depart to the south. They have the option to turn right and go back to the main driveway that comes in off Indian School, or they can turn left and then go down the parking aisle there to the entrance that goes out onto Litchfield Road. The applicant has proposed to provide screening by the way of landscaping along the outer edge of the drive-through lane. Basically, there will be no customer service within the building, it'll all be either drive-through or walk-up service. If you walk up, you either can get your coffee and then take it to the car, and then also there'll be an outdoor seating area at the east and south corner, the southeast corner of the site, you can see it here. Hope that's not me. The applicant submitted some conceptual elevations, which don't come across on the projector as well, but it's, basically, the building has been designed to conform to the colors and materials and architecture of the commercial center in which it's located, with the exception of some of the blue trim, which is related to their corporate identity, and so it is being proposed to be allowed as an accent color to the building. Operation would be 24 hours a day. Typically, they go from 5:00 AM to 12:00 AM, but they also have requested permission to go through 24 hours. The proposed site plan does take out some spaces, existing spaces from the area that, the parking area that's there now, but replaces a couple of them, but even with that net change, there's sufficient parking within that module to meet the minimum requirements for the uses in that area. Staff has reviewed the request and found it to be in substantial conformance with the ordinance. As far as citizen review goes, notices were sent to property owners within 500 feet of the property in a citizen review meeting held on September 3rd. There was no one in attendance at the citizen review meeting, and then notice was published as well for the, this public hearing this evening. So that concludes my presentation on it. I believe the applicant is here to represent the case, so if there's any other questions, I will conclude.
Thank you, Joe.
Conclude.
Any questions for Joe at this point? All right, thank you.
Okay.
Would the applicant wish to speak? Welcome, please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Bill Cantieri. I'm at 4358 East Pierce Road in Phoenix, Arizona. My company, Piazza, is the development manager for the Dutch Brothers Coffee in Arizona, and thank you very much for having us here tonight. We were invited to come to Goodyear, and this is the, be the second location for this Dutch Brothers franchisee. He has one existing unit operating in Peoria right now at Thunderbird and 84th Avenue, and, you know, we're just, you know, believe that, you know, there's a, you know, dearth of good, you know, coffee opportunities, you know, in the area, and, you know, looking forward to serving the Goodyear community.
Okay.
I wonder if anyone had any questions regarding the concept.
Any questions for the applicant? I've not had the privilege of having your coffee, but my 23-year-old daughter, she just turned 23 yesterday, Stephanie, she fully endorses your coffee, she lives up in that.
We don't over-roast the beans, so you don't, you don't, you don't get that burnt flavor you do in other restaurants with the greens, I'm saying.
Respectfully request that Chairman Schlosser try the Milky Way, and you'll be hooked.
I'm still trying to watch my girlish figure. No questions of the applicant? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, anybody from the public wish to speak? Seeing none, nothing else from the commission? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 13 dash three zero zero dash zero 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 two.
Second. Second, look.
I have a motion, two seconds. I have a motion from Commissioner Miller and a second from Commissioner Hamilton. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you for coming out, we appreciate it. Item eight point three, case number 13 dash 630 dash 00002, comprehensive sign package amendment Palm Valley Medical Campus. Open public hearing. Joe's back again.
Mr. Chairman, commission members, if it weren't for the case numbers, there'd be no humor at all, you know, so, trying to lighten the mood a little. This is an amendment to the comprehensive sign package for the Palm Valley Medical Campus to allow for a hospital identification icon sign to be erected on the West Valley Hospital, south elevation facing the freeway. The comprehensive sign package for this campus was approved back in 2006 and set the stage for the signage to be installed throughout the center. Provided in your packet were the replacement pages for the comprehensive sign package, rather than giving you all of the, the whole package, we just gave you the replacement pages. But in a nutshell, what was proposed is the addition of this hospital identification icon, and it was, so it was added to the site plans and the location where it would be on the south side of the elevation of the hospital. And the matrix of allowable signage was adjusted to add that as a type of sign in the packet. The sign itself, is it going to be approximately 14 by 14? And it'll be mounted on with a south tower just below where the existing West Valley Hospital sign and logo is located. It is a, made of a flexible material, not a rigid plastic, but it is stretched on a frame so that it appears to be solid, and it'll be internally illuminated. Staff has reviewed the request and found that this additions, additional signage will help increase visibility to the hospital, for people to know that it's there, not, hopefully not when they need it. Hopefully, they'll learn that it's there well in advance before they actually need it, but this will help them know where it is if they can find it. And so it's a welcome addition to the sign package, and staff has recommended approval subject to the stipulations in the report.
Okay. I was wondering how they'd land the helicopter on the side of that building like that.
I think the helicopter pad has a different symbol on it.
Oh, I thought that was a helicopter sign.
It's a round one.
The applicant is present, if there's any questions for the applicant.
All right, thank you. Anybody have a question for Joe? All right, the applicant wish to speak?
I'm not with the commission, I have a specific question.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody from the public? Seeing none. Anybody from the commission, anything else? All right, I'll close the public hearing. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve case 1363000002.
I will second that motion.
We have a motion from Vice Chair Peters and a second from Commissioner Barnes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries unanimously. All right, thank you very much. Item number nine, staff communications. Anything, Joe?
Mr. Chairman, I am supposed to remind you of the joint work session that's scheduled for October 21st to talk a little bit about the progress on the comprehensive plan with the city council, so I just wanted to remind you of that and let you know that you'll be getting some advanced information on that, hopefully a week before the meeting, if not two, it just kind of depends, but, so you know, if I promise it in two weeks, it'll be one week. I think that's all I have, yeah. Oh, we'll be having a discussion, the same work session with the council regarding the city's design guidelines and some areas of concern that have been, at least I identified at this point, about things that might merit some review and reconsideration and possible modification, so, you know, it might be at a two-for-one that night.
Fun, fun. How is the general plan update process going?
I think it's going very well, I'll let Sherri offer her opinion.
Sure. So we have four chapters written that are out to the commission members and are available, certainly for your review as well, if you wish. I think that they've been fairly comprehensive in their scope, and we've had quite a bit of dialogue. Every meeting of the commission has gone its full term, and certainly you have a representative here, Ms. Hamilton, who has been active with the general plan committee throughout the process, so perhaps she wants to add to that, but lots of good dialogue about city-type facilities and where and how and what they serve, and the purpose of our economic development activities, and what type of activities are driven by what demographics and what types of architecture and design and concentration of uses, and so it's been a very interesting, enlightening conversation, lots of interest in, for example, social service type issues, arts and culture, very, very diverse group, very interesting conversations, so, Vicky, if you wanted to add to that.
Yeah, I think it's.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
I think it's going along very well. After a slow start, wasn't, I wasn't quite sure how this was going to work out. I think things are really coming together, and the chapters I read, I think they're really good in them, especially like the speakers, the speakers are very informative, and everybody's participating, and it's going along very well.
Good, well, thanks for taking the time to do that.
Sure.
Extra work. Refresh our memories, is, what's the timing for that?
So, this process is somewhat drawn out. Let's start at the end. So in November of next year, 2014, the general plan will go to vote of the public. However, we start that process here in about December or January, we'll have a full draft of the document that will start with discussion with yourselves, with the city council, go for public comment, go through a couple months of back and forth in open meetings, et cetera, and then go out for public comment in the March timeframe, Joe, and be open then for review by the public until the vote in November.
So December is when where we can start tearing it apart?
Well, we actually would love your input at this stage, because there really are some unique elements of this that didn't exist in the previous plan. One that we've discussed previously is the land use map, for example, is significantly different, and our approach with that is to go to more of a bubble concept so that the land use map is prescriptive as to the use, but not actually down to the parcel and the zoning, and that's a pretty significant change, but it has had lots of input and discussion with regard to adjacencies of use, so, is it appropriate to have multifamily mid-block, or should it be on the corner? Is it appropriate to have commercial mid-block, for example, service stations, or should they be on the corner? What types of? What types of community uses, such as community centers, churches, public facilities, what are the placements for those? Do they go adjacent to schools, do they go, you know, in neighborhoods, are they clustered together? All those sorts of things come up with this land use map that capture our densities of office, industrial, single-family, multi-family. And so I would encourage you to take a look at that because it's a significant change.
All right, thank you, I'm glad I asked questions. Anything else? All right, I think that's it. Six thirty, pretty good.
Pretty good.